Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Tonight's meeting has been advertised to be held in person and online using Zoom, with login and call information posted on our website. If you are calling into the meeting, I would like to encourage you to remain on the call, but to also go to the township website by Googling Easthamfield Township and log into our Zoom meeting following the instructions on our homepage. Tonight's video and audio is being recorded. For tonight's meeting, Robert's rules will still apply, and the meeting will be run by the chairman, will actually be run by the vice chairman tonight, who will be insisted by an employee managing the Zoom site. Everyone on Zoom will have their microphones muted in order for the audio to be heard clearly. During the meeting, both those present and online, only one person at a time speaks, and they must be recognized by the chair or vice chair in this case. Many people speaking at the same time combined with background noise make meetings like this impossible to hear on Zoom. This rule will be strictly enforced. For people utilizing Zoom, you will need to use the chat function to be recognized by the chairman. To be recognized with the chat function, you must either be a presenter who is on the agenda or a resident or business owner in Easthamfield Township who wishes to comment on an agenda item where you must text your name and address. Your request to speak will then be passed on by staff to the chairman or vice chairman to be recognized. The steps to speak utilizing Zoom are simple. Request recognition by the chairman via the chat speak. Once recognized by the chairman, unmute your microphone after receiving recognition to speak. When done speaking, mute your microphone. For Zoom, any of the violations of the mentioned rules will be deemed to be acting out of order, and your microphone will be muted immediately without warning. Continued violations will result in you being electronically removed from the meeting. Robert's rules apply for those attending the meeting in person. All voting tonight will be done by roll call vote to ensure all votes are properly accounted for. Roll call will be conducted by the township manager. There will be no action taken on any non-agenda items of non-emergency, non-urgent nature that arise during the meeting. All such items will be referred to staff and will be handled at a later meeting. Easthamfield Township public comment rules will apply for public comment. You must be a resident or business owner of the township to speak. You must identify yourself by name and address before speaking, sign the guest log for meeting minute purposes, or follow chat procedure already discussed in Zoom attendance. Comment is limited to three minutes and must be on an agenda item being discussed. Without exception, comment at the end of the meeting for non-agenda items. No action will be taken during the public comment period for non-agenda items. All issues will be referred to staff. We ask for your patience and understanding as we continue to navigate this difficult time. Residents and businesses of the township are fully complying with social distance requirements prescribed by our governor. So we will now move on to our first item on the agenda. And for once, it's a welcomed item.
Good evening. First, I apologize, Mr. Weaver, apparently have to put this here so I can be seen on Zoom, so I apologize for my back. I welcome the officers and their families that are here today and to the board. Before we get into the annual awards, I want to take a moment to recognize police officers in general. In 1962, President Kennedy proclaimed May 15th as National Peace Officers Memorial Day in the calendar week which falls during May 15th, so next week, actually, as National Police Week. It's established by a joint resolution of Congress in 1962, and it pays special recognition to those law enforcement officers who have lost their lives in line of duty for the safety and protection of others. And there are about 800,000 police officers in the United States. On average, 176 are killed each year. And in two, in last year in 2020, 295 died, 182 of them related to COVID, and nine died in Pennsylvania. So far this year, sadly, 96 officers lost their lives as of yesterday and three in Pennsylvania. So if you would, please join me in a moment of silence to honor the officers, their memories, the families and the friends that they left behind. Thank you. Tonight, we'll present the Annual Officer of the Year Award. This award was selected from nominations that were submitted by department employees. In addition, we want to recognize employees who received a total of 51 different awards during the year. Although we don't have time to talk unless you'd like us to talk about all 51 of those, we're going to just mention the names and what the awards were for. Those awards range anywhere from outstanding performance circumstances where life-saving to Narcan used to save lives of those who have overdosed to arrests for burglary, thefts, and firearms-related violations. Somebody asked Lieutenant Polly to come forward.
Thank you. Good evening. As the chief said, there's over 50 awards that were earned last year. And I'm going to read the names of all the recipients and a brief description of what the award was for. The first officer was Officer Stephen Armstrong, who received a unit citation for a vehicle theft arrest, three first aid commendations, two of those, or I'm sorry, all three of those were for Narcan administrations, and then a unit citation for a burglary arrest. Next was Detective David Bender for his role in a rather complex investigation involving theft of motorcycles. And then Lieutenant Jennifer Brubaker received a unit citation for that, in that same investigation. Officer Allison Burns received two unit citations, one for the same, or I'm sorry, one for a burglary investigation and one for a catalytic converter theft investigation. We've had a lot of these incidents last year into this year, so they, they made a, did a good job in arresting some suspects in one of these incidents. Detective Sergeant Christopher Chase, two unit citations again for the same burglary and catalytic converter theft investigation. Officer Tyler Clisham, unit citation for a vehicle theft investigation and unit citation for burglary. Officer Brian Dillplane, he received two unit citations for vehicle theft investigation and for burglary investigation, and another unit citation for a vehicle theft investigation. Officer Ethan Etter, two unit citations, one for firearms PFA violation and one for a catalytic converter theft investigation. Officer Richard Gauk, two unit citations for the same cases I just mentioned for Officer Etter. Officer Jordan Geisler for his role in burglary investigation. Sergeant Jeffrey Hessener, unit citation for catalytic converter theft investigation. Officer Christopher Keen, two unit citations again for the same burglary and catalytic converter theft investigation. Detective Ryan Kelly, two unit citations, one for a firearms-related PFA violation and one for another burglary investigation. Officer Andrew Karnasik, three first aid commendations, all for Narcan administration, and two unit citations again for burglary and catalytic converter theft investigation. Sergeant Anthony Lombardo, unit citation for the motorcycle theft investigation, as well as a unit citation for firearms-related PFA investigation and a first aid accommodation for Narcan save. Sergeant Matthew Miller, four unit citations for motorcycle theft investigation, vehicle theft investigation, PFA firearms-related violation, and a burglary investigation. Officer John Mulligan for two unit citations for burglary investigation and catalytic converter theft investigation. Officer James Pete, first aid accommodation, two of them actually, for Narcan administrations. Officer David Channabrook, unit citation for firearms-related PFA investigation. Officer Jason Skiles, two unit citations for the motorcycle theft investigation, as well as the firearms-related PFA violation. Officer Matthew Spitler, first aid combination for a Narcan administration. And finally, Officer Bill Watt, three unit citations, one for motorcycle theft investigation, another one for PFA violation, and the last for a burglary investigation. Oh, okay, sorry. I forgot one here. Detective Ryan Kelly also received a life-saving award today, actually, for his heroic actions back in March in removing a suicidal subject from, who had walked down in the middle of the highway trying to hit by car. So, and a lot of these cases, a lot of them sound like I was repeating the same thing, but some of these were very large-scale investigations that took a group effort of a lot of officers. And some of these crimes involve multiple jurisdictions, so a lot of good work here, and we're real proud of everybody. So thank you guys for all the hard work you do, seriously.
The annual Kenneth Nightingale Officer of the Year Award is presented to the officer regardless of rank or assignment who best exemplifies the department's sworn personnel during the year. The selection is based upon professionalism and exemplary service during the previous year. Every officer should feel worthy of being selected based on his or her own performance during the year, but only one is chosen. This year, Officer John Mulligan is the recipient. Officer Mulligan has been with the department for three and a half years. He came to us with prior law enforcement experience in the state of Florida. He is one of our most well-rounded and developed officers and is constantly demonstrating his knowledge, skill, ability, and tactics. He has a humorous, outgoing personality and an ability to talk to people while putting them at ease. In 2020, he received five letters of appreciation or praise from citizens that he interacted with on calls. In the words used by our own residents to describe him, Officer Mulligan is exceptionally kind, a man of good character, sensitive, goes the extra mile, a model officer, and the type of officers others, excuse me, the type of officer others should learn from. Living in the community, Officer Mulligan has fostered many citizen relationships, both on and off duty. It is not uncommon for him to be directly contacted by community members looking to provide him with information about suspicious activity or crime and to seek assistance or guidance. In 2020, he wrote 268 traffic citations or warnings. Considering that this was, that this year we were significant, excuse me, considering that this was a year that we were significantly decreased our interactions due to COVID, his proactive initiative remained very high. On top of performing regular traffic enforcement, Officer Mulligan volunteered to participate in several organized special traffic enforcement details throughout the year. These details included speed enforcement, texting, driving enforcement details, and aggressive driving. In addition, he made 30 criminal arrests in 2020. Of these arrests, 15 of them were drug-related and were self-initiated activities stemming from mere encounters while checking local businesses or stopping vehicles for minor violations. These efforts placed him in the top of the department for traffic and criminal arrests in 2020, despite the COVID pandemic. In addition to these efforts, Officer Mulligan takes the initiative to investigate cases he could pass on to detectives. Two cases in particular resulted in arrests of four individuals linked to multiple crimes in Easthamfield and surrounding jurisdictions. Also during the year, as a result of a simple traffic stop, Officer Mulligan initiated an investigation that was later turned over to the county drug task force, which, the task force was able to make an arrest of a person in possession of 40 pounds of marijuana and $5,000 cash. Officer Mulligan subscribes to team mentality and is always willing to help in any way possible to achieve the best possible outcome, despite the extra workload he puts on himself. Officer Mulligan's drive and commitment to fair and measured enforcement was recognized, and he was asked to participate in several directed patrol efforts to address ongoing issues in the Roystown area. Officer Mulligan has a natural approach to the job that teaches, encourages, and supports a healthy work environment and brings unmeasurable benefit to the team. His work ethic and drive are commendable, and his work product is superb. He comes to work every day motivated to make the community better. He is an outstanding representative for the department and our profession. Based on his consistent, excellent work product, efficiency, and dedication to service, Officer John Mulligan was chosen as the 2020 Officer of the Year. John, would you please step forward? As in past years, John will receive a plaque and a watch which has been donated by Finch Jewelers.
I would also like to recognize John's families here. I'm not going to point them out, they know who they are, but it's, it's, it's the families that are at home that support us more work. And I know that John is very appreciative of his family as the rest of us are. So to all the family members that are here, we thank you for what you do at home so that we can get through our shift and get home to you. So I will applaud you as a family. John's never shy of words.
John, John, if you could step where Chief Skiles is so that the people on Zoom can get a good look at you.
Are we sure we want that?
And wave.
I'm not sure if that's wise.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, chief.
You all can stay for two hours if you'd like.
Actually, guys, before you leave, as a board, we would like to thank you. And we've talked about this before. The national climate has not been kind to police over the last few years. And we're very grateful and thankful for all that you do and for the families. Thank you very much, guys.
Diane, if you could queue up the Chantel presentation?
Okay, so next on the agenda is the Chantel presentation. Ms. Schweitzer, are you going to lead the discussion here?
I'll just make some introductions. I know Phil Fregga, who is an attorney with the Cohen Law Group, is on Zoom. He's our attorney representing us, and he has been dealing with Chantel and arranging for the agreement and the franchise agreements and the ordinances. I believe Chris Kyle is going to be presenting for Chantel. There he is. So if we can just unmute him, I think he'll take it from here.
Bill, I wasn't sure if you wanted to say any introductory remarks. We're chime in as I go.
I'm a person of very few words.
No, I will chime in as need be, but please, Chris, take it away. And Cindy, if you or any of your folks have questions, obviously, feel free to direct me or direct them to me, but otherwise, I'll, I'll just hang tough and let Chris make his presentation.
So, so I wanted to, one, say thank you to the Board of Supervisors for your time tonight. You know, please stop me, I'll be brief with a couple of slides on who Chantel is. Thank you to Ms. Schweitzer also for your leadership to get us here to this point. What we are doing is asking for your vote, your approval for something called a video franchise. And this video franchise is going to enable a very transformative project, we feel, in your community, and that is a fiber-to-the-home or broadband project. So I did not misspeak. We have video and we have data. We think it's important for us to offer video on top of this fiber to allow consumers, there are many consumers that still want to purchase the video, and the regulatory reasons why we then have to request a video franchise, but it allows us to get your rights away and, and, and to construct this fiber network, which we will be talking more about, but we're very, very excited. And I thought I'd talk to you just for a couple of minutes about who we are, and then we can talk a little bit more about this project. So Chantel is headquartered in Virginia. We do have a network in Pennsylvania, but we started in Virginia. Our strategy is real simple, we build great networks, we provide excellent customer support, and we partner with the local communities we, we serve. And we're going to be talking about a great network here in a minute that, that we want to build in Easthamfield. If you look us up, we're publicly traded on the NASDAQ, I like that, we can be very transparent with our numbers. The purpose of this slide is there's, we have the financial resources to execute on this project, period. If you look us up as a public company, you will see there's some new news that one segment we own, we have a wireless, a cellular segment, we are selling that to T-Mobile. We didn't want to sell it, but as part of the partnership, T-Mobile had the right to purchase it, but we're not going anywhere. That money's going to come into Chantel. We've been around for a long time, and most of that money is going to get deployed either to shareholders or to investing in more broadband, similar to the project we're talking about here, and, and, and some other communities in Pennsylvania, no doubt. We've got employees and 600 million in revenue, so that's who we are. We're not too large, so there's no bureaucracy and you don't know who to get in touch with, you know, when you want to make something happen. But we're large enough to have the financial resources to do this and have, you know, there's no risk on our financing. The next slide, please. This slide is just to show our operational expertise. The other point I like to bring up is there's no operational risk. We've been doing this a long time. We do, you know, the most advanced technologies in our industry. Until we talk to people about Chantel, a lot of people don't know who we are. This map speaks to our size. And we've got 6,700 miles of fiber that, the fiber stretches into Pennsylvania clearly. And you're going to see a lot more of these little purple dots on our map as we move through 2021. And so what are those? Those are fiber-to-the-home communities where we're already active or we are about to become active in construction or we've launched service. So we started in Harrisonburg, Virginia, where I live, and covered a bunch of areas in the south and we're moving north. And so there's, there's a lot more to come here. But this, this is an important network that talks about our, our skills and our expertise in the telecommunications industry. Next slide, please. What is it that we're talking about tonight? There's some industry lingo that you may have heard. Many of you, you know, may not even need this intro, but I said earlier, this is a transformative project. With this fiber, we, that we want to invest and bring to your community, it will enable what we call a triple play, that's internet, video, and phone. Make no mistake, this is all about internet. But we also think that consumers still want some, want to purchase these other services. We are going to invest in a future-proof solution with our capital investment in your community and this fiber. It, it will enable things like gigabit speeds, multi-gigabit speeds in your community, that those things are very, very important for a variety of industries. The COVID pandemic has put a bright spotlight on these type, our type of networks that we're building for multiple learners at home, for people working at home. It's called a future-proof solution. Some of that's the speed. Clearly, some of it's the capacity. It's a more reliable solution than any other architect. Certainly, if you think of wireless, it's more reliable than anything wireless. But most importantly, what, what the COVID pandemic has shown is it's a symmetrical solution. And you have a lot of people in a home doing more than just downloading YouTube videos or downloading a Netflix movie to watch. When they're working and pushing data up, you need the upload. And, and so when we talk about a gig, gigabit of speed, that's a gigabit down and a gigabit back up. And that's what really differentiates this type of technology. And what we have seen in the communities that we have already launched in, this has a significant stimulus effect in the economic development field in, in, in both encouraging or recruiting new businesses to locate or growing existing businesses. And you can think of working from home, you can think about the hospital medical communities or the educational fields that we've talked about. That's in a nutshell, in the nutshell, what we're talking about doing here, and that's why we need your approval on a video franchise. And oh, by the way, I skipped over, it's, it's a video franchise that, you know, is, is the same format that we hammered out with Lancaster town. Next slide. So over the past several months, with, with Bill's help, with Ms. Schweitzer's leadership, we, we have been engaging with the municipal leadership and public works have been involved, and we're, you know, developing project plans. Work is actually, you know, ready to start. And we've been doing lots of project planning, preliminary permitting. This is, you know, a disruptive project. You know, no one, no municipality is set up to kind of handle this wave. And so we work very hard to, 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 to make sure it's not too disruptive. We, we think that, you know, in approximately 12 to 24 months, all construction will be complete. And so we, we like to go at a fairly rapid pace once we get started. But lots of planning has been going in, and more planning will happen post the approval of this video franchise. And, and this video franchise enables, you know, the other important step of this, and that is, you know, us to seek permits, to request permits. And, and the city has, the township has, you know, lots of influence, and, and there's lots of dialogue that happens in the permitting phase. But as, as we get into this and as we grow, there will absolutely be local jobs. We're still on the early side with that, and, you know, we're looking at, you know, you know, the multiple municipalities up there as we think about our, our plans up there. As we build out neighborhoods, let me talk about this. We will launch service, so we don't wait to build out the full market before we launch service. A neighborhood does is 200 homes or so, and we'll go through and, and segment out to 200 homes or so and, and begin building. And when they're ready to turn up, we'll turn them up, a very micro-targeted approach. You know, we anticipate building out, you know, the vast majority of the market. And when that is done, that's when we'll do more, you know, overarching marketing, sales, things like that, and then roll into our community engagement. So there's still a lot of work to happen. This is the first step, but a lot of work has gone into getting to this step. And again, I, I, I think the township manager and all those that have helped so far. So I've been talking a lot, and I apologize, you know, if there have been any questions that I haven't seen, but that's kind of, that's what we wanted to talk about, and that's why we're seeking your approval for a video franchise tonight.
Sir, the map of your existing areas, I would classify as more rural. And is that typical? Is there a reason?
So there is a reason, that is a great question, and some of it comes from our roots. You know, we were, we are, we were started and we are still headquartered in, in a town called Edinburgh, Virginia. That town has no stoplight, but it has some of the most advanced telecommunications infrastructure in the mid-Atlantic. It probably has over $40 million of telecom infrastructure. It probably has over $40 million of of telecom infrastructure. It's right on 81. You can see Edinburgh, Edinburgh pulled out there on the map. Um, so that's, that's kind of our roots, but that, I don't want that to be misleading. Um, because many of these purple dots, um especially in Virginia are very um are are not rural. They're on the western side of our state, which which does trend more rural, but but they're they're uh they're 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 populous. And and what you will see as we move through uh Pennsylvania and while we stay on the western side of Pennsylvania, that there will be and are um, we're close at hand to some, you know, but let's just say some non-rural um metropolitan areas. And and that's really where this fiber to the home solution has to play because of, and we think that's our sweet spot. We we don't want to go, nothing against Philadelphia. We don't want to go to Philadelphia. We want to, we want to bring this technology solution that all the largest municipalities in the US want. But we want to bring them to community, communities that we identify with. We, why we're here, you know, i-in in the Lancaster, uh Lancaster area and East Timfield areas. And um, and so, you know, we we have experience uh with that. Uh, but that's a kind of a short description of kind of our history and where we've started, why you do see some more rural areas.
I live in the northern part of East Timfield. We have no FiOS. Uh, currently I have a Verizon line. Would I replace that Verizon line? Do you provide the landlines as well as the um uh desktop lines and?
We do. That's a, that's a good question. So I mean, yeah, that you, that line can stay uh there. But um when uh our service becomes active, yes, you you could, if you so chose to call and disconnect Verizon, we will provide a very similar service, a phone service to what you're getting on Verizon. If you're getting the DSL service on Verizon, a much improved internet service. The what we know twisted copper pair service, uh we we have that part of our footprint. What I always say is ours is just a little bit different. Um, our phone service is IP-enabled. Um, and so it has some advantages, but if the power goes down, um, you're, you'll move into battery backup on our IP. And generally, that is fine, but for an extended power outage of, say, you know, 12 hours or more, your Verizon landline is actually energized. And I don't know, you know, as long as you're not dealing with an in-home wireless phone, you know, you'll be able to use that. That's the only difference with that copper uh from an IP phone, but uh, you know, for all intents and purposes, we have caller ID. We have all the functionality on our local phone. Um, it's going to be fiber-based and yes, we'll provide the video and a very attractive video package, but what we really want is to provide that internet connection to you.
Thank you.
A lot of, you know, a lot of people ask, you know, is it comparable to Comcast? And, you know, I think that Comcast will do a similar phone um product of, you know, what what I'd say about Comcast um is that we have to be price competitive with Comcast. And what we believe is that um we're going to provide an improved internet offering, you know, at or below the price, the standard of pricing of Comcast. Now, what we're also seeing is the incumbent, Comcast does a lot of things very well, I should say that. Um, uh, they are, they're going to be a significant competitor to us. And what we've seen in these other markets, uh, the purple dots on these markets where we have are competing with them is they mark your market as competitive and you will see some more aggressive uh competitive tactics from them. And at the end of the day, who wins when businesses compete? Your citizens are going to win. And and so we are, you know, while we're bringing a superior technology, we believe, we also respect Comcast. And we know they do a lot, a lot of things well, and they're going to compete very hard with the consumers in your market.
Uh, Mr. Kyle, um, you just answered uh most of what my question was going to be relative to the service and how it might differ from uh what we have now. I I appreciate that. This is 100% fiber network?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Um, my other question has to do with, uh, you said, uh, you used the term disruptive. Uh, I guess from a construction standpoint, um, can you give us some idea what we can expect over a 12 and 24-month construction period? And how much colocation will would uh would go on, if any?
Okay. Well, let me ask by colocation, um, a couple of thoughts come to mind. Let me, I'll take that one first if I could. We like to follow power. And so where power is aerial, we'll go on the poles. We'll, if that's what you mean by colocation on on the poles, we'll share poles. We'll run our fiber there. And then, you know, when it's an aerial, normally there, it comes off to the home aerial and we'll pull into the house, to each house uh with an aerial drop. Where power goes underground, we go ahead and follow underground. We get into conduit, we'll place our own conduit. Um, all of that is governed in the permit permitting phase. And so there's a lot of checks, balances and controls that happen to limit the disruptive nature um to the citizens. Um, a-as as we go, as we go through this. Um, let me talk for a second. So there's, there's disruption. I just wanted to be clear. There's a lot, there's a lot of work to be done. And um we will work collaboratively uh with municipal staff. And at the end of the day, they have, they have ultimate kind of control, um and that's through the the permitting process. Um, for the citizens, what we do um to limit questions to you uh or questions to the municipality is we do a mailer, you know, in advance of doing any construction, we do door hangers. If we're going to do something buried in the right-of-way, you know, around their yard, um, we knock on the door and there's an additional um door hanger that we do. And almost every time we 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 have a conversation with them because that, you know, that can take a day or so of us hand digging in someone's right-of-way attached their yard. But you can imagine that, that's where we get most of our questions. Um, and where you might uh get a question from a citizen. And so there'll be more to come as we get closer to that actual, you know, physical construction phase um of our work. So did I touch on some of the points? I, we can come back to colocation to see if I answered what you were thinking about. We want to use existing facilities where we can. It lowers our costs.
Right, right. Okay. That that's fine. You you did address the 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 colocation. Uh, finally, my la-my last question has to do with um uh your, Shantel's 100% committed to providing this service to every corner of our township.
Okay. So, yes, the the let's be clear of, you know, about this. So we want to get to as many of the residents as we can, our businesses, economies of scale, to load on as many as possible. You know, we are anticipating right now hitting at least 8,000 homes. And that excludes your MDUs. MDUs have to go in a different agreement. We have to get, you know, permits to get on site of the MDUs. So when, that's what I mean by the vast majority. That number, I think, will grow. So it will be available to every corner of your municipality. But, you know, I, it's not going to be to 100% of every single resident as as we can tell today. We'll figure things out. Things, you know, should improve as we go, go through. But I want to be clear and upfront um about that.
Okay, thank you. Where you are established, can you tell me what an average monthly fee would be for DSL and telephone service?
Yeah, a-absolutely. Um, the other thing, yeah, I was uh that this, I was thinking about this before in terms of pricing. Um, a lot of the different providers make you take more uh than you may want to take. You may not want phone, you know, you, a lot of people just want to use their wireless phone, for instance. Um, if you just want to buy our internet um package uh and you want a gig speed, we have lower speeds, but if you want the gig speed, you know, that would be $80. And then it moves down from there. In addition, um, as kind of the larger telecom provider, I I something that's important that right now there are federal subsidies for people that have been impacted by COVID or students. And if you qualify for one of those, that's a $50 discount off of your internet package. And we're um, so, yeah, that that's one piece of it. Now, video, um, that's the internet, okay? So um and and I think, well, that's internet. Um, for video, depending on the package, we have a um a very basic, you know, package of of just your broadcast channels. Then we have a a middle package that would have your ESPN channels plus your broadcast. Uh, and then we have higher packages that have, you know, lot lots of channels. And um, you know, you you could get um from us, you know, internet and video for 150 bucks. I I think if you think about the different, and it gets complicated when you start talking about these different options of what you want to put together, uh, the speed or the video package. Um, I I come back to, we have to be price competitive to the Comcast offerings in your market today. So, you know, sub hundred dollars, uh, clearly $80 and let or less, but $80 if you want a gigabit internet product, but then it becomes, how many of our other products do you want? It's $20 for phone, and that includes long distance. All of our pricing will be on our website. We're very transparent with pricing. Our video prices do go up each year as we um get programming increases passed on to us from the programmers. Uh, we pass those on to end users, and that's where we get the majority of our complaints. Um, the video business is really kind of imploding on itself um due to some some fairly significant problems in in with content costs. But uh our internet prices, you know, I think what you're going to see is more speed for less money in our industry.
Would would video mean a Zoom and?
No.
No, that that would come under the basic.
Internet. That's right. You can Zoom, you can video conference, but by video, I should have said cable TV.
Okay. Thank you.
And then, you know, I think where this goes long-term uh is people purchase our internet and then get their video package completely separate from us. Um, through something like a YouTube Plus or Hulu Plus. If they want lots of channels or they may just put together a net, you know, just do Netflix. But I, but I think that's where video goes long-term. I said video again, cable TV.
I'm just going to say, any questions I had have already been answered, so I'm good.
Just had one question about um bandwidth. Having another provider in the area, how does that affect bandwidth uh for us as a community?
Yeah, um, I'll take a shot at this and then I I want to make sure I'm understanding. Um, this technology, this investment, that's going to be clearly a multimillion-dollar investment in your community. Uh, this fiber will offer significantly more bandwidth, and by that I mean capacity and improved user experience because of that. I think the the COVID virus really uh put some stress on s-on on some providers' existing networks. A lot more capacity almost happened overnight, or demand for capacity happened overnight, and and they weren't they weren't all ready for that. Um, some of it had to do with the design. DSL will never, I mean, it's, I think, I DSL is not a technology. Uh, that is something that runs over the old phone lines that that's going to be able to keep up with the bandwidth demands. Um, you know, I think that you know, today what we're seeing is most people are going to want a minimum of 100 meg megabits in their house. Um, and and gigabit is when we sell, 70% of the people that buy internet from us are buying a gigabit service from us. And and that gets to kind of this bandwidth, this capacity issue. And 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 what this fiber does is it's not a ring. Um, other architectures, and especially cable modem architectures are on the ring. The ring goes all the way around the neighborhood. And if there's a problem um with one house or one user in that neighborhood, that ring can kind of bog down. When it's fiber to the home, um, you know, that 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 issue is eliminated. We don't, we don't, we don't build a ring that everybody share. People, we're shooting fiber to people's homes.
No, that was very helpful. I think um one of the things that happened as a result of COVID was that many people had to work from home, school was conducted from home. And as you had indicated, there was uh a problem with capacity in some instances. And for our township, a good portion of it is only served by one provider, whether it be Verizon or whether it be Comcast. So that was my only comment.
So Phil, if you could uh walk us through the process we have to follow next? Diane, if you could unmute him?
Sure. Well, the process at at this point, the, if you will, the final client package that we provided to Cindy based on our efforts, you know, starting from the the onset, which of course was the, an initial draft. And as Chris alluded to, just a little bit of background real quick. I know you folks have other matters you need to cover tonight. But we are, and it just contemporaneously with dealing with this, we're also working on behalf of you folks for the Comcast renewal. Um, the reason I bring that up is that there are three of the LIMC members who are just, for lack of a better term, out of cycle relative to the rest. We had done 10 uh LIMC member renewals with Comcast a bit ago. And the the Lancaster Township uh franchise with Shantel that Chris alluded to is, you know, all but mirroring what we had done with Comcast. So process-wise, the good news here, one is that, you know, we're not breaking any new ground here. Obviously, to the extent that, you know, if East Timfield Township were to have unique issues that we need to deal with. And I I will say this to commend Cindy. She's as diligent as any uh manager that that I've had the pleasure of dealing with. So there's a, you know, the elected officials, uh, I'm sure you already appreciate her, but she um, you know, left no stone unturned. So we we kind of had an extra backstop there. So as as we sit here today, um, the process-wise, just purely by coincidence, I had also sent a package to Cindy today for the Comcast renewal. We don't, we obviously are in a public uh meeting this evening, you know, to seek approval for the Shantel agreement. I I coincidentally sent the package to Cindy earlier today. Process-wise for Comcast, there's a, what is referred to as a public notice and comment uh hearing on the, what I'll call the beginning or front end of the process that talks about past practices of the cable operator, future cable needs of the municipality. The distinction here is that's in the context of a renewal, whereas this is an initial franchise, so we don't have that. So where we are now, uh, after all the vetting, you know, procedure-wise, is simply the township has, you know, and we provide this to make this as turkey as we can, a a notice of advertisement as well as uh, you know, the approval ordinance, which can be modified to the extent that you folks have any, you know, protocol that, you know, you want to make any tweaks, you can scuttle what we've provided altogether and use whatever you have. Anything we ask is that, you know, you don't make any substantive changes because the four corners of the franchise agreement, you know, need to remain intact. But it's really, you know, if you will, in the the board of supervisors' hands at this point as to take the the action that, you know, we're respectfully suggesting that you take upon consideration uh a little bit further down in in the agenda. So that's, that's the long and short of it at this juncture. And again, happy to answer any questions. These franchise agreements, as a matter of federal law, are non-exclusive. Uh, you know, answering a question that wasn't asked, but occasionally people will say, well, what impact, if any, does this have on our current uh, you know, Comcast franchise agreement? The short answer is none. This is just a competitive uh issue. Uh, you know, Shantel is is making a a play to overbuild uh Uh, you know, Chantel is, is making a, a play to overbuild, uh, many municipalities. In this case, we're, you know, helping Chris and his folks while representing, you know, vigorously representing municipalities, but teaming together to, uh, embark on a rollout, both in Lancaster County and then, uh, starting in York County as well. So you'll start to see some of your neighbors, you know, pop up, if you will, at various stages. Um, you know, some of these are initial calls, others are, you know, approvals are imminent and all points in between. So again, I don't want to go on and on, but I did want to give you a little bit of perspective, uh, that, you know, this isn't anything that we're doing in a vacuum and right now, whereas Lancaster Township's the only other purple dot that you would see in the general vicinity, you know, it, it won't be too long for now. You'll, you'll see any number of other purple dots in Lancaster County alone.
We've been having some frustrating internet interruptions over the last month or so particularly with some even more before that. When I go home tonight, what could I tell my wife? How soon could you have this installed for us?
Just to, to, to preclude that answer, Mr. LaFever lives on the north side of 283.
Yeah.
Got it.
The rural.
Chris?
Yeah. Uh, we, we get this question a lot. May, maybe the, the right short answer is let me get back to you. It, it's never as quick as people would like. Building fiber takes some time. Um, I, I, but I'm afraid, you know, it, it could be, you know, it, it conservatively, it could be a, a, you know, 12 months before we are up and ready to turn, to activate service to your home. I hope it could be sooner. Um, we're trying to bring in some of those, but, but, yeah, it's, it's not in one month.
Well, that's better than I expected. So hopefully it'll be better than she expected. So.
He's fairly close to East Petersburg, if that helps.
That's right. That's right.
Uh, one, one question on the, uh, on the agreement, uh, notwithstanding the fact that one is a renewal and one is a, a new franchise agreement, uh, the terms of the agreements will, would be very similar, correct? In terms of?
Yeah. Yeah. If I wasn't clear on that, I'll, I'll take another shot. The, you know, we've got a sort of an interesting dynamic here in as much as Lancaster Township was the first Chantel franchise that our firm worked on. But it was effectively, if you will, on the heels of the 10 LIMC Comcast renewals that we handled. So from a Lancaster Township perspective, it was, you know, rear looking, if you will, uh, as regards, you know, how closely would that agreement replicate what we had done with Comcast? For you folks, it's, it's a little bit of both in that, you know, we're, we're still kind of following that model from the LIMC group to Lancaster Township, you know, to Chantel handling that. But, but as, as fate would have it, you folks, as well as Westland Peter, or excuse me, Eastland Peter Township and Mountville Borough are in this subset of three of the LIMC. So, you know, we're, we're going to be able to leverage the time and effort. And, you know, it won't be too, too long where I don't know that you'll go through this process again. And because it's a renewal and there, you know, there will be less, presumably less questions you would have of Comcast. But you will find that, uh, the agreements will be exceedingly similar and that is, is very much by design. And I've spent, uh, Chris can attest, uh, an incredible amount of time with him and, and his team. Uh, the end game being, you know, we realize that, you know, from a commercial standpoint, you know, they've got to have, uh, you know, a framework from which to operate. Because, you know, there are a lot of municipalities that are begging for somebody to come and, if you will, compete with the incumbent and, and, you know, unfortunately far too many of those instances just because of the commercial pragmatism, the, you know, the, the return on investment doesn't justify the capital outlay and the marketing effort. Uh, you folks are ideally situated here in that one, you're, you know, you're, you're in the sweet spot of which Chantel is looking to do and you're again riding on the heels of, uh, any number of Comcast renewals, uh, some of which are, you know, very close to your own backyard. So, uh, yes, it'll be exceedingly similar. Um, I don't think you'll have any issues. And again, Cindy and Chris and I have gone through the drill there. So she's, uh, she's vetted that up, up one side and down the other, above and beyond the, you know, the efforts that we've undertaken. But appreciate the question, but, um, in my humble opinion, not to worry on that front.
The, my only other thought on this is, uh, why I'm in Mr. LaFever's camp when it comes to our current provider. I do, uh, I am concerned a bit about perhaps a negative impact on, uh, our revenue, given the fact that we have a competitor coming in who would be providing, uh, a service, perhaps, I'm not guaranteeing it, but perhaps at a lower, uh, cost than our, than the incumbent. And, um, we are limited in terms of, uh, franchise fee. Uh, the, 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 the actual income that comes into the township. Any way to offset that?
Well, yeah, again, great point. And if I can just take a swag at that, that one, you know, again, this is, this is the, if you want to call it the double edged sword where, you know, any municipality where, when Verizon, you know, we did a boatload of initial Verizon franchise negotiations back in the 2006, seven, eight timeframe and are in the process of doing a boatload of renewals. That was the question that was asked at the time. What, you know, in theory, it's a zero sum game. If you look at it from the perspective of anybody that jumped ship from Comcast to, uh, Chantel in this case, or in that instance Comcast to Verizon, what does that do to? Chris is also indicating that he's unable to mute, unmute himself. So, uh, I don't know if other folks are seeing that, but he, he may have something to say here. But the, so the point is, you know, I always ask when I'm talking to clients, even when we talk about, you know, 5% is the maximum franchise fee and it's applied against what? So you want the maximum breadth and depth of franchise revenue presumably, unless you don't. And, and those that don't, oftentimes municipalities that are in rural areas that, you know, other things so constant would have a greater penetration of DirecTV or Dish. Or, you know, as we're getting into more cord cutting, you know, there are just a lot of issues that, you know, are having a, you know, a net potentially anyway, you know, adverse impact from the limited perspective of franchise revenue. Because again, if you were to say, you know, our, our cable operator, cable service price is going up, a good thing or a bad thing? Well, obviously as we as consumers or residents would say, of course, it's a bad thing from the standpoint of, uh, municipality, looking at that single line item of franchise revenue. It's a good thing. So the challenge then becomes, you know, when you have a competitive environment, other things so constant, you know, is, is that competitive force going to drive prices down? And Chris, you can speak to this. I, I would say this, for what it's worth, at least in the Comcast Verizon drill of again, in a six, seven, eight timeframe. And then obviously the years thereafter, as the, the networks were, were built out for fires. If our experience was more, you know, improved services, there wasn't this dramatic drop in prices. Hence, you know, the compression of franchise fee revenue, you know, at least from our experience, we didn't see that. Now there are other competing forces. Again, the cord cutting, regardless of whether it's Comcast or Chantel, people just say, the heck with it. I can, you know, I can do the streaming or Hulu, whatever the case may be. And I'm not, you know, I'm not going to, because I think everyone, presumably everyone on this call knows that, it is to Chris's point, not to turn this into a, you know, a telecom dissertation, but somebody can have the triple play and home security and anything else that a given provider provides. But the only service out of all that, that contributes to a municipality's franchise fee revenue is in fact the cable service. And, and even there, the lines are starting to blur. One of the folks asked a good question earlier about, you know, whether Zoom and, and the like is considered a, you know, a cable service versus an internet service because it's, it's video. I'm sitting there looking at something different than if I'm, you know, traditionally looking at cable TV, but it, you know, it doesn't contribute to the franchise revenue. So I'm not trying to talk in circles, but there are just a lot of moving parts on this. Chris, I don't know if you want to add to that?
I, I'll try to interject. I, I'd say from a macro trend, I don't, I don't know how east, what you're seeing specifically there, but franchises are growing, going down across the board period. And, and I don't think there are any projections for them to, to be flat, to level off or especially to go up. And that, the biggest driver is this moving over to internet streaming, cord cutting, Phil called it, where there isn't that tax, um, or franchise fee picked up on that product category. So, so I, I think that's the macro trend. I, I think it's, you know, a fair point. There's going to be competition. Our video, let me say it this way, Comcast can buy video content a heck of a lot cheaper than we can buy it. So our video piece is where we are not going to be, you know, as competitive. We'll have to be at their pricing, but it, we're not going to be able to price below, uh, them on video. Um, but, but I think where we've seen more importantly, so set moving to something pivoting maybe to it, the other part of this argument that, that I think is very important. And, and it's the infrastructure or argument and, and the, you know, this investment that we're making in that area. You know, it improves the quality of life, improves a lot of things. I can't promise you the following, but I can say there have been national studies, uh, done to this effect. And this fiber investment improves the desirability of living in a place. And the studies that are out there show an increase in real estate prices. And then you could correlate, well, you know, so there's other, whether it's real estate or some of the other stuff we're going to be talking about long-term, um, there's other taxable revenue. But yeah, they don't fit within the franchise fee category. And I would end just by saying that franchise fee category is in trouble.
Sure. Yeah. And if I could just add one quick point, because the question is a great one and it's certainly relevant. It's also relevant for those folks that don't have competition for, for the simple fact that, you know, this isn't, we're not splitting atoms here. It's not complicated math. But if the price increases don't offset subscriber churn, you can have, you know, the maximum breadth and depth of gross revenue items, you know, applied against the, uh, you know, maximum franchise fee and your franchise fee revenue net-net is going to go down. Simply because again, you're, you know, you're not seeing sufficient lift in the price to offset what is, you know, the inevitability of the subscriber churn. Like I said, that's across the board, whether there's one cable operator or more than one in any given municipality.
Thank you.
So Ms. Schweitzer, I see later on in the agenda, we have, uh, an action item regarding a vote to advertise.
Correct.
That, is that the next step?
Yes.
Okay. Is everybody done with questions? Okay. Well, I want to thank you gentlemen. Um, we'll be taking that up a little later in, in the agenda and I think it's time to move on. So thank you. Next item on the agenda is, um, the hearing for, uh, building sign ordinance and text amendment. Who will be taking that? Mr. Beck?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman or Acting Chairman, Vice Chairman. Before you gentlemen, tonight is, um, action on a minor zoning ordinance text amendment dealing with business and identification signs, specifically building signs in the enterprise zone, campus zone, community business center zone, regional commerce center zone, mineral extraction zone, and the rural business zone. The minor amendment is simply to increase the number of signs permitted from one to two. This is, um, an amendment to correct an issue that has brought the attention to the township. A recent case of the zoning hearing board where the zoning hearing board, um, denied a variance request for a business to have two signs highlighted the fact that this, uh, our zoning ordinance as it stands right now currently affects all of our businesses in our major commercial zones. So in an effort to correct this issue in the most expedient and efficient way possible, um, staff, uh, prepared and drafted this ordinance in response to that. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Procedurally, Ms. Schweitzer, I see it's a hearing.
Technically speaking, yes, we opened the hearing 8804. So you'd be seeking some public comment.
Okay. Do we have any public comment on the text amendment change as explained by Mr. Beck? Ms. Garberani on Zoom?
No, sir.
Do we have any comment from the board? Okay. Do we officially close the hearing now?
Correct.
Okay. So the hearing is closed on the text amendment change. And we will be taking action on that item. Do we do that now or is that later in the agenda?
Yeah, I actually didn't put it on the agenda later on. So if you want to take action now, that would be appropriate. It'd be ordinance number 202101.
So do I hear a motion on ordinance 2021, building sign amendment? Motion to approve the zoning ordinance text amendment to update the regulation for businesses and identification building signs. Township file 21-19-01 as presented.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. LaFever is there, second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Weaver. Call for the question.
Mr. Weaver?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
Mr. LaFever?
Aye.
Mr. Wigglesworth?
Aye. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Yes.
You know, again, I'd just like to comment that, uh, while I'm in favor of what we're doing here with this ordinance, once again, it is a adjustment to our sign ordinance. And, uh, it's very important to me that, and I think for everyone, that, um, we get the update, uh, moving along before we have to make any future changes to our ordinance as it relates to signs.
Do we have any status update to where we are on that right now?
No, sir.
Okay. Can we have one for our next meeting?
Yes, sir.
Thanks. Thanks. For our consent agenda, has everyone, uh, viewed that or their? Any comments on the consent agenda?
None here.
Okay. Seeing none, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Bennett, is there a second? Second by Mr. Weaver. Call for the question.
Mr. Weaver?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
Mr. LaFever?
Aye.
Mr. Wigglesworth?
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Action items on the presentation that we, uh, just saw from Chantel. Is there a motion to authorize staff to advertise the ordinance for adoption?
I have a question. Are we acting on a, what a possible solution would be that we could have multiple providers within East Hemfield Township? And that the residents would have the ability to choose Chantel, Verizon, Comcast, whatever they want?
As the end result, you'll have two franchise agreements.
We'd have.
Both using our rights away.
We'd have two. Yeah. The only problem I might foresee in that is if in an area, and of course I'm concerned about the northern area, if there isn't enough for one of the franchise zores, franchisee, whatever, to service that area, whether it would still be done for a few and the other provider has the majority. So I don't know how that would play out. And I guess previously we've had a, a single source internet provider in, in that Comcast in the areas served, which did not include the northern area, which is why I have Verizon. So that's the only puzzlement I have yet on this. Frankly, I'm impressed with Chantel. Uh, I think they could provide a, a very good service. In, in what I'm hearing, the little bit that I have heard, I just don't know how this would play out across the township.
Just sort of support what Mr. Weaver said. That was my question as to whether or not everyone in the township would be able to benefit from this. And that's, that's really what, you know, I'm personally after. I think this is a demographic, that will really want this service. But right now, according to their map, it's only going to be really in, in our village areas. And it's not going to be available to. And it's not going to be available to many, many throughout the township. So I've, you know, I've got some concern about that. I'd like to see more of a commitment. If you're going to come in and we're going to make, we're going to, you're going to be able to cherry pick. Okay. The, the easy places to put this and not, you know, I don't know if subsidize is the right, what, right way to put it, but you know, we're going to be looking at getting it, getting it to more people. Because it is, I think at the end of the day, a much better service and a much needed service.
My only comment is I do think it's needed. I think competition is good. I think we need to increase the capacity. I think COVID showed that. I would say that Mr. LaFever, your comment makes me think you want to have your cake and eat it too. Living.
Of course.
Living out in the rural section all by yourself and having all the amenities of the, of the big city. But with, you know, with that being said, I, I think private business, I think they're going to do what they need to do to make it work. And I don't think we can force them to go out there. And I do think competition's good. I hope they do get out there, do hope technology solves that problem for us. But one of the.
This is Phil Fraga. If, if I may please, I, I, again, great questions. This gentleman, this has been the, the biggest issue that I have spent with the Chantel folks on, on your behalf, to be blunt, as well as other municipalities. Because again, I know you need to move on to other things, but just real quick, kind of cable franchising one oh one here. There, you're going to be hard pressed to find any cable operator that is going to agree to a, a big word ubiquitous, which is, you know, covering any municipality without any restrictions. The, the most common metric that cable franchise agreements have are what are called density requirements, which think of as clustering. So if, you know, if there are 10 of us in the room and, you know, nine of us are all kind of clustered together right in the thick of the township. But I live, you know, I have a, build a log cabin out in the middle of woods somewhere, you know, my cache is as green as everybody else's and they want me as a subscriber. The issue is if that network doesn't extend all the way, they're going to come and say, well, Mr. Fraga, we, we'll, we'll do the engineering. Ideally, there'll be other residents in the area because, you know, we want to be able to leverage the cost. It's all about the ROI. So I can tell you that, you know, the, the, the map in and of itself, we've spent an inordinate amount of time with the Chantel guys about this, whether it, it helps or it hurts. Because, you know, everybody wants to know, you, you gentlemen have made the point for me. And I, I have texted Chris to see if there's any chance he could jump back on because he wanted to talk to me after. But I said, I wanted to stay on until we got to this point. But I have beyond worn out my welcome with these guys telling them that this, you know, you, you can say if I'm going to demand you be everywhere, you know, a Chantel or anyone else is likely to say, thanks, but no thanks. We're not saying we won't necessarily eventually get there. The issue is what can we commit to? And the term they've used with me are the phrase that, you know, we can't boil the ocean. So then the issue becomes based on where you would expect to be, forget commit. How, how much of East Hemphill Township or XYZ Borough do you plan on cover over what period of time? So, you know, I'm not going to sit here and misrepresent that every last resident of East Hemphill Township without any equivocation is going to be served or able to be served. I can tell you that success begets success. So what they're trying to do is plant a flag, show they're making a big commitment, that it's, you know, a net positive for the township for as much of the area that they're, you know, willing to commit to. And the hope being that, you know, the results exceed, exceed their expectations and they extend even beyond that. But, you know, hear me loud and clear, that is not, you know, I, I almost chimed in when the, the prior question was asked about, you know, every corner, you know, and not to get into semantics. If every corner means every home, you know, for that matter Comcast, you know, there are some, some municipalities that even with those density requirements end up covering every place just because there's no room for new development. And there's just, there is sufficient cluster your density that those density metrics really are meaningless. Because if every home is already served, because you just don't have the sporadic, you know, scattergram, we're a home here and a home there. So, you know, happy to follow up on that. But I, I would tell you, you know, on behalf of East Hemphill Township, you know, the, the, the current build out, you know, map commitment, et cetera. I, I would say it's, it's as good, as, as good as it's going to get. And as the gentleman mentioned, there's, there's no ability to dictate, you know, you either go everywhere or we're not going to grant the franchise because unfortunately I suspect they would say, we'll, we'll have to respectfully decline. Because, you know, we're, and, and there are other issues you can get into. If there's, you know, rock and other things where it's excessively costly to get to places. But you, you can't duck the question. You don't want, you as elected officials and administrators don't want to have to say, well, we'll have the haves and the have nots. You know, will, will the vast majority based on their current plans get, be able to be served? Yes. Will it be all? No.
Okay. Well, no demand there, no, number one. The only thing, you know, I just want, would hope that Chantel would be open to a conversation, conversation about, you know, where they're going to go and, and provide their service. Because I do believe at the end of the day, this is going to be a very successful venture for Chantel. As I said, I believe the community is ready for this and I'll be very positive for them. And, and I just want to, would like to see that kind of service provided to as many people within the township as possible. Perhaps not.
Absolutely.
Perhaps not in all corners of the, of the township, but for most.
Yes, sir. Rest assured, you're preaching to the choir and, and we, we have your best interest at heart. And that's, that's the end game from the Coen Logroom's group's perspective.
I have my answer. I'm willing to go ahead.
So do we have a motion to authorize staff to advertise the ordinance for adoption? Thank you. Motion by Mr. Bennett, second by Mr. Weaver. Call for the question. I'm sorry, Mr. LaFever, excuse me.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
Mr. LaFever?
Aye.
Mr. Wigglesworth?
Aye. Motion carries unanimously, three to oh at this time. Up next. Lime Springs, twenty four fifty six Null Drive, variance to noise ordinance for wedding music, May 29th until 11:00 PM. Ms. Schweitzer?
You received a letter laid in your packet. This is a letter requesting them to have music at a wedding for one of the owner's children. This is not a public event. This is a private event. It's not rented. It's, it's the owners. It's for May 29th and they would like to have music from nine to 11:00. So we would need a variance from your noise ordinance.
Is there any comment from the audience on Zoom? Any comments from the board? Is there a motion to authorize the noise variance request for May 29th between the hours of 9:00 PM, 11:00 PM as outlined in their letter of April 30th?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Bennett. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. LaFever. Call for the question.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
Mr. LaFever?
Aye.
Mr. Wigglesworth?
Aye. Motion carries unanimously, three days zero. Okay. Police body cameras is the chief on?
He is.
I'm sorry, I was muted.
Get away, chief.
As you know, we, we talked about in the past that we tried to get a grant for body cameras. Found out this week that we did not get the grant. So we had money budgeted for this year. Twenty six thousand seven hundred and sixty four and sixty cents is what was budgeted for the first of five annual payments. Was working with the vendor today and there's a possible other option that will give us more equipment, better equipment that we can renew every three years. So I'm working through that new quote. It's comparable to a little more, about $800 more a year. But I think in the long term, it's going to give us better equipment and it'll be replaced every three years. So I'll work with Cindy on that. But what we were asking for tonight was just permission to move forward and make this purchase. It looks like we would have it as, once I order it, four to six weeks, it would come in. And in about two weeks to do the, the in-house setup. And I would hope to have the cameras on the street at some capacity, maybe mid to late July.
And really this is more like a reauthorization. This has gone through public safety. It was recommended. And we actually did vote, I believe, to authorize this in the budget.
Yes, it was in the budget.
Again, we're all familiar with this. So is there a motion to authorize proceeding with the purchase of police body cameras?
So moved.
Payable and annual installments, motion by Mr. LaFever. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Bennett. Call for the question.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
Mr. LaFever?
Aye.
Mr. Wigglesworth?
Aye. Thank you. Motion carries three to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Spooky Nook Sports Memorandum of Understanding. Ms. Schweitzer, who's running with this?
This you heard about at your last meeting and you asked us to go back out and reach out to Mr. Beiler. Mr. Skiles or Chief Skiles did do that. You have a copy of his letter that we had sent out under letterhead. And I didn't get any response, but Ms. Chief Skiles did speak to Mr. Beiler about the issue. And he was in full agreement with dissolving the MOU.
Good. Okay. On that note, is there a motion to discontinue? Well, first of all, is there any comment from the audience or on Zoom? No? Okay. Is there a motion to discontinue the memorandum of understanding between East Hemphill Township, the Hemphill Fire Department and Spooky Nook Sports concerning Spooky Nook employees serving as volunteer members of the Hemphill Fire Department as special fire police? Motion by Mr. Bennett. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. LaFever. Call for the question.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
Mr. LaFever?
Aye.
Mr. Wigglesworth?
Aye. Motion carries three to zero. Thank you. Up next, Old Roarstown Road Bridge Project, authorization to sign supplemental engineering agreement.
We talked about this a few months ago where the project needed additional funding through our engineer. So this has finally gotten through the PENDOT process for the agreement, which took several months. So what you have before you is a supplemental engineering agreement extending the cost to eighteen thousand, eleven dollars and ninety eight cents. So I just need authorization to have that document signed and send in PENDOT.
And that's the amount we approved previously.
Correct, yes.
Okay.
Any other comments from the board? Any comments from the audience or on Zoom? Hearing none. Is there a motion to adopt resolution twenty one, twenty twenty one dash twenty one, authorize signature in approving the PENDOT supplemental engineering agreement, number eight A, one thirty dash B?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Bennett. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. LaFever. Call for the question.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
Mr. LaFever?
Aye.
Mr. Wigglesworth?
Aye. Motion carries three to zero. Thank you, gentlemen. Action item, twenty twenty one yard waste agreement with Columbia Borough.
This is an annual agreement that we have with Columbia Borough. They accept our yard waste. When the new manager got in line, got on board, I believe in 2020, he initiated this agreement. We did one in 2020 and now we have 2021. So there is no change to the fee schedule.
Very good. Is there a motion or is there any comment from the board?
No.
Any comment from the audience or on Zoom? Is there a motion to approve the twenty twenty one municipal yard waste agreement with Columbia Borough?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. LaFever. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Bennett. Call for the question.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
Mr. LaFever?
Aye.
Mr. Wigglesworth?
Aye. Motion carries three to zero. Thank you. Old Business. Any item on our old business? New Business. Managers' report and Board Group report.
Yeah, you have a copy of that. It's a very condensed report on your table. It's also part of your packet. I added it this, this afternoon. Not a whole lot there. Centerboro Road, we continue to work through the process. The declarations of takings that you approved a few months ago, those have been issued and to the property owners. And our right of way agent is working through those. Church Street paving, there's no further news on that. I know PENDOT is working through some right of way takings on that one. Old Roarstown Road, I do have a meeting next week, or actually tomorrow regarding the status of Old Roarstown Road and what the holdup is. Now that they have additional monies, the engineer has additional monies, perhaps we can get some things accomplished here. Farmingdale Road, you know that we acquired that grant for a hun- nine hundred and ninety three thousand. We are still waiting, we are waiting for the paperwork on that and we continue to wait for the HOP to be issued. Also continuing requiring, acquiring right of way. Still hoping according to the engineer for a summer construction on that.
So the Farmingdale Road project won't take as long as the State Road Bridge project?
I hope not. I hope not.
Okay. Hopefully you're right.
The State Road project, that corridor, we're down to coordination of the wearing course. The wearing course on the Penn State part of it is going to be scheduled for June 7th. The rest of them will follow suit and their coordination effort is, is to make sure that the lines and the barricades are all in the right spot at the right time. So that's kind of winding down. The interchange project is still on, on schedule, I'm told, as well as Penn State project.
To my view, using that, I believe it would be very helpful if there are some directional arrows added in the inclined portion of State Road from the hospital entrance north to Harrisburg Avenue. It's kind of confusing which lane to take. And I think a few arrows there down from the Harrisburg Pike might help a bit.
On the roadway, you're?
On the roadway. And we can see as it gets all put together, but that's just an observation I've had that it's so wide, it's, it's just pick and choose.
You're right.
So. We can take that up in the traffic commission when it's.
Let's do that.
Did you hear that? That concludes my report unless there's questions.
Thank you.
Any questions from the board? Okay. Public comment?
Mary Rose, you're up.
The only thing I ask is that you need to speak into the microphone. Sorry, so that they can hear you on Zoom. Yes, I'm, yes. No problem. Here, let's try.
I'll get it.
No, it's just like Dorothy in The Wizard of Oz, just follow the yellow brick road. I'm just being facetious.
Is that your comment?
I'm just being facetious, that's what I said. Yeah, truly just frivolous amusing.
Okay. Did you have anything you wanted to discuss?
No, no, I'm, I'm waiting for my opportunity to speak, that's all.
It's here?
It's here.
Oh, it's, oh, it's here.
Yes, you're up.
Once we get going, he goes quick.
You were excited by this tin, 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 whatever he was.
Decided here. All right. Let me introduce myself. My name is Mary Rose Durkin. And I'm representing my husband, Jim Durkin, who owns Choice Security. Unfortunately, my husband tragically passed away in a plane crash April 19th of 2018. And he owns Choice. And the thing with, I didn't know where to start with this. So I was at his office just last week and there's a plot of land directly across from this building, 200 Richardson Drive. So I asked Ray Bear, his business partner, to give me an update as far as, you know, trying to sell that property. And interesting enough, I've had my vehicle serviced at Dutch Valley, which is on Columbia Avenue. They could very well benefit by obtaining that. So I'm just going to read to you just a summation. So I'm just going to read to you just a summation of what Choice has experienced in terms of prospective buyers looking into that land, that parcel of land. There was a company called Clutch and Go, and they wanted to buy the property in two thousand and eight for a hundred and twenty-five thousand. The engineering were two, and township fees were over eighty-five thousand. They did the perk testing, box turtle hunts, whale drawing, water runoff, sidewalk analysis, and whatever was necessary to break off the parcel from our property here at two hundred Richardson Drive. They, Clutch and Go, finally surrendered when the fees were still increasing. And then Choice Security had negotiated another land sale agreement about, in about two, two thousand and twelve with Dutch Valley Auto for eighty-five thousand. The same same things developed once again, as the prior findings for the engineering group had to begin once again. Dutch Valley also surrendered when they, when their permit costs reached eighty thousand dollars. There's been several other interested parties since then, but they knew the baggage developed and only had a mild interest and eventually backed away. One interested party wanted to develop it as a stone parking area for trucks with no building and became aware of the paperwork, the middles necessary to continue and backed away. So I just came to start the process of trying to see, this is a pandemic, and businesses have been stifled, businesses are struggling. Dutch Valley could very well use that property, but eighty-five thousand dollars, you know, those kinds of exorbitant fees are definitely stifling for them to be able to obtain ownership of the property. Meanwhile, the sign sits out front and just, you know, this big parcel of land, just say for sale, contact Ray Bear and his phone number, but it really doesn't serve any useful purpose. So maybe you could direct me where I could take my proposal or where I could find a solution, a resolution to, you know, everybody. It's a win-win for everybody.
I, I'm gonna just comment first and turn it over to you guys. We are mandated by the state for a lot of the things for land development that you're talking about, whether it's PENDOT for an H. O. P., whether it's D. E. P. for the environmental studies, stormwater management, all of those things. And you're absolutely right. The fees have absolutely gotten outrageous. I think when you talk to land developers, at one time, land was the biggest, the cost of land was the biggest problem in the acquisition and putting a deal together to develop property. That's no longer the case. It's the engineering and the design that has escalated the cost of development. So you were, I mean, I know it's no consolation. You are not alone. Mr. Beck, is there a specific challenge to this site that's, you know, making it more difficult or more challenging?
I don't know without looking at the the files for Clutch and Go or taking a better look at the map.
Was it possibly considered for a lease agreement with Dutch Valley that they could use it, pay you a fee, and there probably wouldn't be?
I don't know anything about a lease agreement. Maybe you could elaborate on what that means?
They would pay you so much a year to park their trucks there.
Well, it's it's just, it, all it is right now is just grass, so.
I understand, there need to be.
So who would actually be responsible for developing that, you know, into a serviceable area to utilize? I mean, you know, Choice doesn't want to go ahead and put something out there, and then it's a lease, and then they say, oh, good, goodbye, you know, after a while.
And I guess there'd be.
They're not in a position where.
Engineering to even strip the topsoil and put stones in, I guess, yeah. Okay.
I mean, it's Choice Security, burglar, fire alarm. It's the alarm industry, so I, I mean, they don't have a lot of funds.
We're in a commercial, commercial district.
Yeah, for Richardson.
Richardson, yeah.
Yeah. What is?
Richardson Drive, which is.
How big a parcel?
It's it's, it's a decent size. I mean, you wouldn't build a house on it, but certainly Dutch Valley is so overcrowded that, I mean, they could just go extend, you know, take down that chain-link fence on that side of the property and obtain it. But I would think with your, I understand there's mandates and everything else like that, but this pandemic has created so much havoc for small businesses who have struggled or even are gone by the wayside. Nothing against Governor Wolf, but his paycheck was never interrupted, you know? Other people's had, you know, bars and restaurants, the hospitality industry, and my daughter works in, and restaurants in Chicago put the same air filtration system that are in airplanes. And again, you know, they couldn't do the indoor dining, and that was Chicago because of the number of COVID cases, and vaccines are taking a different perspective. But we're not out of the COVID crisis yet, you know, by any means. And how do you, how does, you know, I mean, the other people don't have the time and energy to come, and so I want to start the process of of addressing it.
Do you have somebody advising you?
No.
Okay.
I, we have an attorney, you know, Dan Blakenjere is Choice Security attorney. I'm just trying to start the process to just find a way that this could be feasible for Dutch Valley's is the most likely business that would take possession of it.
And you've spoken to them?
I did, actually, when I had my car serviced last year, one of the guys had said, you know, the frustrations that they went up against with with township, and I see where you're, it's kind of like hands are bound, and where do you come to some kind of common ground now to be able to move forward in a very pre-COVID situation with mandates? And how do we get to the, to the, to a place where businesses can actually, you know, continue to flourish, which Dutch Valley is doing very well? I mean, I didn't know, as a triple-A member, I get a discount, and I, it was just kind of a nice thing. So it was convenient for my husband to walk directly across the street and drop his vehicle off at any time and have it serviced and was always taken care of. But they're likely candidates. So I just, I understand there's mandates, but now we're, everything has to be rethought since COVID hit. I mean, we, to think in terms of, you know, we need to think outside the box or the tunnel vision or, you know, the stipulations that are there. I just think we need a broader perspective.
Mr. Beck, can you recall the professional engineering consultant that Dutch Valley used recently? Was it R. G. S.? I don't think it was R. G. S.
Is R. Two one of them?
No, they had previously used R. Two, and they used E. L. A. Group this time.
E. L. A. I would suggest you contact E. L. A. because they've worked with the township, and they can give you an estimate of what might move this forward. And it might, might possibly not be as much as your understanding. It sounds like you're working with loose information.
Yeah, all I have is just some background, right? Someone struggling.
For you a bit, maybe, and you could determine the feasibility.
Because I'm just a silent investor in the business. My husband started Choice Security in two thousand and one himself, with no customers. And when his passing happened, the business sent out over four thousand letters, not just to customers, but to vendors, and he was well-recognized in the alarm industry.
So I think what Mr. LaFever, what Mr. LaFever recommended is an excellent starting point. There is a process for developing any site, especially, and when you're getting into a commercial site, it's even going to be more cumbersome. It is very hard. We all have some degree of understanding, but I couldn't do it by myself. And I can only imagine like where you would go to start.
Right.
The only thing I can say is if you run into issues or trouble, we are here, we would try to help as best we can. But there are things that we can't waive or facilitate for you. There are steps that you're going to have to take, you know, to develop the site or whoever wants to develop the site.
Exactly.
To what I'm hearing, it's a lot add-on project, and E. L. A. can help you with that, a lot add-on.
Do you have a contact number that you could share with me?
And I might even start with Dutch Valley first, just talk to the.
Would Dutch Valley be the one to reach out to their?
They would know, they would know the contact for E. L. A.
That engineering to start to re, to resurrect it again, so to say?
Mr. McCollum would have the the contact for E. L. A. Group.
Okay.
Mary Rose, if you need any, any information, I can get it for you.
Okay, good. Okay, thanks, Tom.
So how do you like township meetings?
This is my, this is my first one. I've been a resident in Hemphill since eighty-five. We actually moved to Lancaster County from Fort Monmouth, New Jersey, a job brought my husband here. I know I'm only allowed three minutes, but can I share something? Can I read something for, to you? It's not gonna, it's, it's not, it's not cumbersome, but it's sort of something my, my son stumbled on when he was preparing my husband's jewelry. And my husband was very active in rotary, and he drafted this, and we never even knew what, about this speech until my son stumbled on it. And it says here, "My name is Jim Durkin. To know me, you first need to know my parents. My mother, Mary Catherine McAllister, was an Irish Catholic and a Republican. She grew up in a tough section of Greenpoint, Brooklyn. If you know anything about the New York City docks, you know there is a big M. logo on the tugboat station at those docks. The M. stands for McAllister. Although it was her first cousin's tugboat company, she grew up in poverty. Her father died when she was five. When she was fourteen, she was forced to work in a factory to support the family. Her mother eventually remarried and had another child. When my mother was twenty-two, her mother died, and she became the guardian to her eight-year-old half-sister. The stepfather was gone. My dad, John Vincent Durkin, was also Irish Catholic, but raised in a family of Democrats. He grew up in Providence, but found a job in Queens where he ended up meeting my mother. They married before he was deployed to Europe in the Ninth Army Air Corps on D-Day plus six. I take great pride in the fact that my dad was not actually drafted. He voluntarily enlisted. My dad did not think he was coming back, and he was determined to make sure that my mother, that my mother never again lived in poverty. He took comfort in the fact that the Army Life Insurance would insure that. During the war, he received a letter notifying him that his father had died. His request to temporarily return home to attend the funeral was denied. Even after fighting in the Battle of the Bulge, my father did return for good, and my parents started a comfortable life with three children. My parents expected my brother, sister, and I to go to college, but refused to pay our tuition in order to teach us self-discipline. My first job out of college was with the U. S. Army. For the most part, I enjoy the Army. What I hated too, what I hated were two certain phone calls I received in the middle of the night. Lieutenant Durkin, get up, shower, shave, and wear your dress blues. Call back in fifteen minutes, or the MPs will be sent to your quarters. Those were my death notification orders. The first time I had to knock on a door at seven A. M. to inform a mother that her son was dead, the second time to inform a wife that her husband was dead. I was also trained to present American flags at funerals. On thirteen occasions, I went on a bended knee and presented the flag to wives, mothers, fathers, and other family members. On behalf of the President of the United States, the U. S. Army, and a grateful nation, I present this flag for the faithful and dedicated service for your loved one. Needless to say, I did not enjoy this either. The death notifications and flag presentations did not even compare to the time I received orders to meet another officer at Newark Airport. The officer was escorting the remains of an Army captain from Germany. My job was to escort the captain's remains to the funeral home and present him to his family. It made me sick to my stomach. However, it was the Army that made me realize what I needed to do in order to succeed. Every day at exactly nine oh one, not a minute early and not a minute late, I reported to Battalion Commander Lieutenant Colonel Theodore W. Hammer. He would give me a daily list of things to do. Most of them were meaningless. Meaningless. One morning, he was reviewing my duties from the day before. He noted not everything was completed. My response haunts me to this day. "I ran out of time," I said. He turned around in his chair, looked up to me, and said, "Did you really need to sleep last night, Lieutenant Durkin?" For over a year, this cat-and-mouse game persisted until I was transferred to the Army Satellite Agency. It was there that I was promoted to First Captain. As I thanked my new commander, he handed me a box. Inside were captain bars, along with a note. Jim, these were my bars. "I hope you wear them proudly when you are deservedly promoted to captain. You are an outstanding officer." It was signed, Ted Hammer. That simple note changed my life. He had been testing me all along to bring out the best in me, to see whether I had what it took to succeed. From that moment on, I always had confidence in myself to persevere. Lieutenant Hammer had retired by then, and I never had the opportunity to shake his hand. I coached lacrosse at Hemphill High School for eleven years, and I have told that story to about two hundred players. The moral of the story, their biggest critics may actually be their biggest cheerleaders. I became Lieutenant Colonel Hammer on the, on the lacrosse field. It gave me immense pride when former players would say to me, "Coach, you didn't teach me lacrosse, you taught me life." He wrote this in twenty fifteen. "I just celebrated my fortieth wedding anniversary in July, and my daughter just announced her engagement to be married in twenty sixteen. My son is a C. P. A. with K. P. N. G. and is currently serving a two-year tour in Melbourne, Australia. Lou Gehrig once said, 'He was the luckiest man on the face of the earth.' I knew how he felt."
Very nice.
Thank you.
So anyway, my husband just made some contributions, and I just, wherever I can continue a legacy, just to be able to see this parcel of land come to some kind of resolution, I'll partner with Tom when I see him at B. J.'s at customer service. Is it, does it behoove me to go to a planning commission or anything like that, or no?
Not at this point.
Not this, okay.
Let's, let's.
Start here.
You got good advice here with this LGA.
Got it.
And, and, and the auto, auto.
Dutch Valley.
Dutch Valley owner, yeah.
Okay, let them, let them talk, resurrect and, and connect and have a conversation.
If you have a, if you have a valuable piece of property, there's a, there's always an opportunity out there to, to develop it. Just, you know, you shouldn't get involved or be all that concerned about the costs and everything that's involved. You should let somebody else worry about, like Mr. Wigglesworth said. You know, we, we sit here and we look at all this, but we really couldn't do any of this on our, on our own. You know, you just need, there's a point at which you need professional help, and I think that's what you need at this point.
Got it. That's where I started, because I just putting my cards on the table because I have no direction. And it's just that, you know, I've seen the parcel of land, and I pass it all the time. And then just last week, I said, geez, maybe, and the flyer for the township meetings came, was in my mail, you know, and I resurrected that, and I said, well, maybe I should start there.
I'm glad you did.
Okay.
Okay.